So, what's going on?
How are you?
What's your beef?
Okay. No, that says residential, but it's in our seat.
Yes, it's in our seat.
So, is it going to be residential homes? Obviously, that makes a big difference.
Right.
Yeah, I was noticing that. It's just this death of silence.
You guys all set? All set over yonder? Yeah, no problem. How are you? Good, thanks. Got something else?
Does he?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Seabees Planning Board meeting. We have a few orders of business that we need to attend before we start our meeting. Thank you. Anyways.
What's that Pac-Man, Arthur?
Yeah, I guess so, Arthur. No Pac-Man in here. Anyways, we have an agenda before us at this point. I've had one request to move Sherburne Commons number 0803 to the top of the list, so we'll run through our minutes, and that'll be the first thing we get to before we do public hearings. With that change in the agenda, I appreciate a motion to approve said agenda. Do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes havey unanimously. You have minutes from April 14th, May 12th, June 9th, July 14th. Are there any errors, omissions, or changes? Yes?
Have you had a chance to go over our minutes?
I'm not sure that I went over all of these minutes, but I believe they have been reviewed by other staff.
I'm going to make a motion to approve April 9th, June, July, 14th minutes.
Okay. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Yes, sir. Let the record reflect, Mr. McLaughlin is abstaining from that. Okay. So, that brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is a previous plan. It's Sherman Commons number 0803 for the outcome. Yep. And staff, I don't know if you, Andrew, if you want to chime in and start the process?
If I could, Mr. Chairman. The issue before the board, just to remind you, you have a, you are the site planning authority on this as an elder housing facility. And the question came up about using a portion of the existing facility for medical services that would serve both the clients of the facility and would take in a limited amount of patients from outside the facility. The definition of elder housing facility under 139-2 talks about associated and ancillary facilities and services. The definition of accessory use in 139-15 talks about accessory uses that are subordinate and customarily incident to the primary use. So, here, the primary use remains the elder housing facility. And Mr. Gifford can tell us a little bit about the proposal, but it's in a very small portion of the utilizing the existing.
All right. So, point of clarification. Go ahead.
I am in a butter.
Yep.
I am a direct-to-butter except for the one foot strip. It separates me from the back of Sherman Commons.
Right.
Should this go another way? Should I get off and ask this question at the minute of the butter? Or should I just recuse? Or what do you want to do?
I think the best thing would be to recuse yourself from the process at this point.
I do have a question, but we don't have anything in the package, so if we're going to agree.
Mr. Chairman, my advice would be that you are within 300 feet, so you would be a direct-to-butter. If you have a question, it should be from the audience as a member of the public.
Yep.
Because I don't know anything about this. My name is on the plac, but we know what the plaque wants, so.
So, I think.
Let me turn it to Mr. Gifford, then. I don't know if you have something else to add, or?
Yes. No, I think that the key, what we're asking is the board to make a determination that is, you know, number one, associated and ancillary, which is within the definition of the elder housing facility, and also that it's accessory to that use.
Okay. Mr. Gifford?
Thank you. Yes. Good evening. The space that we're talking about is what we call at Sherburne Commons, Sherburne House. It was, when Sherburne Commons first opened, was the dementia unit. It, the determination was made when it came out of bankruptcy not to re-license that as a dementia unit because it only had two residents there in the time that it had been open, and they hadn't been there at the same time. It also required a great deal of staffing that you couldn't share with other parts of the building. So, the determination was not to open it up again as such. It's been an open space. It's not been, we've used it for meeting spaces, for local nonprofits, and we've also had a few of the rooms converted over so that residents could have guests stay there. What we're, would like to be able to do is to have it turn into an income generator for us, something that would be, would help us as far as the, as we, as you know, we're applying for nonprofit status to become, again, an island-run organization. And we'd like to be able to have that be a part of that ability to keep the place open and keep it being a contributing part of the community and contributing to the island. We're talking about a space of about roughly 3,300 square feet out of a building that's 52,000 square feet. So, it's not a huge portion of the building. It would be able to be accessed from the outside directly and wouldn't be an imposition to our residents, and it would also be able to be supportive of our residents.
This really isn't a public hearing, but, so, Lynda, go ahead. I'll be a little cautious here where we're going.
I was on the original Sherburne Commons board. Where did the plaque go, by the way?
It's still on the wall.
Okay. And I'm the closest to butter. And I don't, I was, I was the one who pushed to have the Alzheimer's unit on the original group because there were so many people I knew here who had Alzheimer's, and now it's even a larger group than it was before. I don't know where they're going with those people. That's where they were supposed to go. I understand it hasn't been used that much. But I want to know what this ancillary use is. I don't hear a description of exactly what is going to be happening with this. Is, are we talking about respite care?
No.
What are we talking about here?
We're talking about.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
We're talking about, we're talking about doctor's office, basically, through the, for the hospital. This is another one of the primary, new primary care physician on the island who's looking for space that is not actually within the hospital that would be available, again, as Mr. Boris has said, to residents as well as to the outside world.
That's concerns to me because we were sold a bill of goods. I was representative on the board. They had a lot of the meetings, neighborhood meetings, at my house, actually. I think Nat came. We were sold that this was going to be a low impact, and it's been great. They've been great to have his neighbors so far, and what is it, eight years? Been great to have his neighbors. When we start adding other uses into this structure, that's going to generate a lot of traffic, that is not what was anticipated. So, I'm a little concerned about opening this door. Are we talking about one doctor, four doctors, a lot of traffic in and out of there? That's not what was going to happen in there, and that road has a lot of traffic issues because of the 40B around the corner. That was all held up in court because of the traffic. So, I just want to know what's happening right in front of my face.
The.
That's at my end of the building, on top of it.
The traffic, I think, would, would only be during, you know, regular work hours. It'd be during the day. It would be, you know, they would have regular hours like any of the other doctor's offices.
How many doctors?
How many? One doctor. One doctor. The newest doctor on the island. She was, you know, previously up in Maine. But, so, it would be one doctor, it would be during the day, be regular hours. It would also be somebody who'd be available, I believe, on Fridays, which, as we know, most of the other doctors are not on the island, so. So, I'm, you know, there would be some, but I don't think it would be an overwhelming increase in traffic.
Is this, because things are changing, as he alluded to, there's a whole new group taking it over.
Let's be, let's be a little cautious here at this point.
But I, I'm very happy somebody's taking it over, but is this opening the door? Is this going to start an incremental change in the use of the building, or is this as far as we're going at the moment?
This, this is as far as we're going. We don't see a huge change in the, I mean, what we're there for is to be a retirement community, and that's what our intent would be, is to remain as a retirement community, but offer this as an ancillary service.
Yep. Andrew, any comments on that, just in terms?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think that there's a limited scope here. It's a small fraction of the existing building. It's one additional doctor. It is not going to impact the overall hours for the site plan. So, you know, as staff, we feel that it is within, it's within your jurisdiction to make that call on it. If it were larger of a different scope, we would have a different recommendation, but we do feel comfortable in recommending that you make that determination.
Are the parameters on the use that Mr. Gifford stated somehow going to be tied into a decision or something that we do?
We would write up a determination.
Yep.
That would tie in the factors that have been mentioned.
Okay.
For your signature.
This really isn't a public hearing, but I'll, Nancy, go ahead. No. It felt like it for a second, but.
Mr. Chairman, Nancy Lee Sixwright's landing. I was under the impression this was a public hearing and as a.
No.
As a, I'm sorry, but as a member of the public who does have a mother who's in an assisted living facility now, I just wanted to comment that the availability of services, such as a primary care physician proximate to where she is, would be, you know, was very helpful. And I hope that with the parameters that you have, that you will take into consideration the fact that having a private doctor, a primary care doctor on, onsite at Sherburne Commons will be a benefit to the residents. Thank you.
Board members, is there anything you'd like to add to this? Okay.
I'd like to ask.
Yeah.
What's the, the doctor's specialty?
I believe that she would be, well, I'm dating myself by saying this, but a general practitioner.
Yeah.
Nothing specific.
Not at all.
The Dr. Larson, Larson, excuse me?
Larson.
Larson. I keep making, Larson has got lots of specialties there.
Okay.
I think one thing that would help mitigate the traffic is, because I was there every day, so I saw it very much, is that a lot of the cottages are not being used, and so there isn't a lot of traffic from them, so the traffic in the main building would not be so noticeable.
Yep. Had anything else from the board or from staff? It's a pleasure of the board at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification with Andrew's language. Do you have a question?
Okay. Do I hear a second to that?
Sure.
Motion's now made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. Three to zero vote at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. So, under public hearings at this point, 1713, which is Ken and Diane Oats, 1913, Brian Ryder, 2013, Michelle Whalen, and 10-14 are all continued to our next meeting or two. That brings us to 7714, which is Albert S. and Maureen Glawacki on 55 Duke's Road, and this is the start of our public hearings now. For the applicant, I see Mr. Santos. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors. In attendance tonight is also Sarah Alger, representing the applicants, Albert and Maureen Glawacki. As many of you know, Albert passed away during the, or at the time of filing this application. And then also Mike Glawacki is, Michael Glawacki's in attendance tonight, too, who is the son of Albert and Maureen. So, the application before you is a definitive subdivision entitled Duke's Road Estates. It is essentially a two-lot subdivision, if you will. One lot is designated for the road layout, but it is essentially a two-lot subdivision. The subdivision would be accessed off the very end of Duke's Road. It's on a parcel of land approximately 1.63 acres and currently consisting of one parcel that houses the existing Glawacki dwelling, which is shown on the plan here to my left.
The existing dwelling being in this vicinity right there.
The lot itself is currently located in the lug one residential zone. However, this plan was developed off a preliminary plan that was filed when the property was in the R-20 zone, subsequently was filed within seven months. Therefore, the zoning, or the R-20 zoning has been protected in the plan before you is a subdivision with regards to the property with respect to the R-20 zoning requirements. As I had mentioned, the applicant proposes two buildable lots with an extension of approximately 140 feet off the end of Duke's Road. Duke's Road is a gravel road right now, which ends at the Glawacki property. Would we be extending that road approximately 140 feet under the rural road alternative within the subdivision regulations and providing a hammerhead turnaround and then access to the two particular properties, both residential driveways off of the extended Duke's Road? We are proposing 20-foot-wide gravel road in accordance with the standard template for that width of roadway. The site itself is located within a Zone X flood zone. It is outside a designated 100-year flood zone with regard to a specific elevation, and there are two wetland areas that basically traverse the property. There is a wetland located at the end of Duke's Road and is also a wetland associated along the northerly property, northerly property line.
So, two wetland areas, wetland area here at the end of Duke's, and then a wetland area here on the other side of the property.
Duke's Road is a public 30-foot-wide layout that extends all the way from Maticat Road to this property, intersecting Vestal Street and Hawthorne Lane, I believe, down just past the, the property line here. This would be the, the extended terminus of Duke's Road, as it right now does only service at the end, the Glawacki property. The site itself is within a map, National Heritage and Endangered Horses Program area. That area does occur to the northern portion of the site and is outside the developed portion of the site. The development portion of the site does occur within existing developed lawn mow areas that exist on the site, as many of where the site was utilized as a landscaping operation for some time. That operation has since been abandoned, and the property now functions as a single-family residential home. We do propose siltation fencing, protection of the wetland areas and so forth as part of the definitive subdivision plan, and any proposed development and/or the extension of the road will require a permit from the Nantucket Conservation Commission for work within their regulated setbacks. The site is located in a sewer district at Bath, this past town meeting. The site is within the sewer district, and the intent here would be to service both of these homes with public sewer. The site does not have water down this far, so there would be, there is an existing well on 53. There would be wells drilled for this, this particular application, so it would be private wells with a public sewer component. Traffic generated by the development would be limited to the two residential uses at the end of Duke's Road. There is no phasing planned for this project. There is no opportunity to extend Duke's, essentially past where we are extending it due to the wetland restrictions, so the site itself does not show any type of expansion or potential for expansion with regard to additional abutting, abutting properties. The site is not located within the public wellhead recharge district. It is located within the Board of Health's Hummock Pond Watershed Protection District, which the use of the public sewer does help within that situation there. Existing vegetated cover with regard to the site, as I had mentioned, is mostly happening within the existing developed areas. We will need to clear the wooded or brush area to extend Duke's Road, but for the most part, the interior of the site is already open and cleared and ready for the future development of the, of the lots. We do have a complete subdivision package which shows existing conditions.
Could you turn the microphone? They can't hear you, please.
Okay. The site plan set does show a complete package with regard to existing conditions and proposed conditions. This is just a general schematic of what the two lots could be developed as, two residential structures, potential for old buildings, the extension of Duke's Road, and two driveways serving the subject parcels. This plan does also depict the existing vegetated clearing limits, silt fencing, erosion control, and so forth. The application itself has been submitted with a request for waivers, waivers that you would typically see for a rural road alternative type of subdivision, or in this case, a subdivision that's simply servicing two lots. I'll be brief on all of those, but basically, those waivers relate to storm drainage, landscaping plans, typical standard cross-sections as opposed to the rural road alternative, staking of the subdivision, the waiver request itself for the rural road alternative, landscaping, sidewalks, bike paths, street lighting, curbing, berms, driveway aprons, and those are all listed as a complete waiver request as part of the application package. The two lots themselves, with regard to lot area, as I said, we are subject to the R-20 requirements. The lot to the west contains an area of 30,402 square feet with an R factor of .86. The lot to the east, 38,950, with an R factor of .70, and both actually have over 20,000 square feet of upland area. And so, no need to have the 90 percent rule with regard to upland area within that zoning district. So, they're completely compliant with the R-20 frontage area, in fact, completely compliant with the upland requirement of the 20,000 square feet in the R-20 zone. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Go ahead, Lynda.
Back it up to the front. How many lots, I'm looking at occasion in the package, two, four, or six? It shows three lots, forget the road. I got a barn on one. I got a building envelope, we're going to get rid of the existing house. And then I got another lot which has an approximate building envelope. How many lots do I have?
You have a two-lot subdivision. We're talking about 53 Duke's Road. The barn is on 55 Duke's Road. That was an A and R.
That's why this is so confusing to me, because I see that, but I also see the barn lot, and I know that was part of this whole shebang to begin with, way back. That's where they had all the stuff.
Yep.
So, I didn't know, I didn't understand that at all.
Yeah.
So, we're not touching the barn lot?
No. This is strictly 53 Duke's, I'm sorry, my 53 to 55. 55 Duke's Road. The barn lot is 53 Duke's Road.
All right. So, the barn lot's a pre-standing lot, even though it has a use on it in a non-commercial area, but it's not ancillary to a house, so it's a carryout there for this grant property?
The barn lot is being redeveloped as a residential property correct, right now. And that property was subdivided under an A and R approval.
A long time ago. So, it's not part of this lot?
Correct.
Okay. So, then I'm taking the lot that's in green and splitting that into two, each one has a building envelope outside of all the other problems they have?
Correct.
Okay. I'm trying to make it.
Anyone else on the board?
Yes, sir. I was wondering, Paul, instead of have the cul-de-sac, you need that for frontage? Is that?
Correct. We've got, the, the cul-de-sac is designed, well, there's a hammerhead turnaround within that, within that area, but the frontage is derived from Duke's Road, the extension of Duke's Road and the turnaround around the hammerhead. Yes.
Because what I was thinking is, why not just eliminate that or have it as an easement rather than have it as, if the board had go along with it? It doesn't seem, you know what I mean? Doesn't seem like we need, like we'd need it. I mean, to me, it's confusing to have a, a road lot for, for a turnaround.
Yeah, but we physically, well, we physically don't have the turnaround on Duke's Road right now. Really, the turnaround is basically the driveway for 53, 55. So, I mean, it does, you know, the easement becomes an encumbrance on a private property, whereas this is a public use. It's part of the road.
Will it be conveyed to the town?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board?
No.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering, Paul, instead of have the cul-de-sac, you need that for frontage? Is that?
Correct. We've got, the, the cul-de-sac is designed, well, there's a hammerhead turnaround within that, within that area, but the frontage is derived from Duke's Road, the extension of Duke's Road and the turnaround around the hammerhead. Yes.
Because what I was thinking is, why not just eliminate that or have it as an easement rather than have it as, if the board had go along with it? It doesn't seem, you know what I mean? Doesn't seem like we need, like we'd need it. I mean, to me, it's confusing to have a, a road lot for, for a turnaround.
Yeah, but we physically, well, we physically don't have the turnaround on Duke's Road right now. Really, the turnaround is basically the driveway for 53, 55. So, I mean, it does, you know, the easement becomes an encumbrance on a private property, whereas this is a public use. It's part of the road.
Will it be conveyed to the town?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board?
I'm just looking for a list of waivers. I assume I have this letter. Yeah.
Andrew, Leslie, did you have anything?
No, I think we've all looked at this before, so.
Okay. Did you need another second? Yeah, go ahead, Paul. Go ahead, Matt.
Paul, when you said existing gravel, Duke's Road, eh.
Well.
Not really. But, that's why I'm saying you did say waiving the rural road alternative as part of your waiver list.
Correct.
I heard you say that. Okay. Because, I mean, Duke's Road, I mean, I go, I don't go all the way up like I used to. I go to, you know, almost all the way, but not, not as far as this often enough, so. But it's always been fairly decent up there width-wise, brush. That's the, the biggest issue. I mean, we're not adding a lot of traffic. We start getting into, you know, widening and all that stuff, you know, that'll be a, it's unnecessary because it's at the end. It isn't in the middle. You know what I'm saying? What's the existing width? As I recall, it gets wider as it gets up there.
I mean, at this, at the given end here, at the turnaround, you got 20 feet. You go further up, say, you're at 12 feet. You go to 60. It varies completely throughout the, as you said, the brush is cleared, I think, pretty consistently throughout the entire roadway.
Yeah.
The problem is the road just narrows down and expands out as you kind of move around. At the end, we felt it was appropriate just to extend it as 20, only because I'm trying to utilize it for a turnaround, and also, at the very end where the turn is made, it is approximately 20 at that end. But it does neck down here.
You know, 12 feet here, 16 feet here.
Yeah.
There, he's going up the entire road.
I mean, it's, it's not a typical turnaround sort of scenario as the typical, like the fire trucks. I know the fire department doesn't like hammerheads.
Yeah.
They like to have, but I mean, we've gone through that.
Yeah.
You know, like being spread away in those places. But this is a little bit different than that.
Yeah.
The turnaround is everybody's driveway, essentially.
Yeah.
Always has been. So, and I'm fine with leaving it the way you have it. I'm just trying to say that you may not really need to get that elaborate either. You know what I'm saying? Depending upon how the properties turn out, a lot of the landscaping will end up taking care of this problem.
Oh, yeah. No, it doesn't, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward, it's a two-foot fill with a gravel roadway going down. The 20-foot does give us the ability with the turnaround.
It'll go extra width here.
Yeah.
And the driveway here ascending up does give us the ability.
Proven like an SU-30 or that straight smaller fire truck to come in, to come into the driveway and then back their way out and get out of there. You know, narrowing it down to a smaller width roadway will limit that, but it does, it does work coming in and out.
That'll make them happy because you have to do something.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, they're going to move, they're going to, they're going to move Albert's original house?
I don't know whether the plan is either to be move it or demo it, but it's not part of, you know, the intent right now is.
I mean, it's not going to be part of this.
I don't think it's part of the plan.
Okay. Okay. That's it right now, Barry.
All right, thanks. Go ahead.
Duke's Road is in horrible shape. I hate going down there. Are there any provisions here to grade Duke's Road on occasion?
Duke's Road is in horrible shape. I hate going down there. Are there any provisions here to grade Duke's Road on occasion? I mean, it, I've been down there a couple of times for HCC business in the last three or four months, and I thought I was going to lose my car halfway down it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, Duke's Road's a public road, so I don't think there's a group of, and Mike may be able to help me, I don't think there's a case where the homeowners go in there, chip in, and then, you know, grade this thing like they do when Gosnall, the Satcham where it's all private. I mean, this is public, so it would be graded as per the DPWC's fit.
Oh, that, good luck with that. Okay.
Anything else? This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if anyone would like to comment on this? Seeing no one, it's the pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit.
Well, let's.
Or close, yeah, close, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Yeah, thank you. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the pleasure of the board at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Not a heck of a lot to say there. You want some more conditions over there?
Let me just, go ahead.
I'm assuming that the motion would include our standard type of conditions.
Right.
One thing that I would think that maybe we could not require here is a homeowners' association.
Yeah, we don't do that.
No.
For two lots.
We mention it, but we shouldn't have it for this.
Provided that the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, no, I didn't ask for a waiver of it, but, yeah.
Provided that the cul-de-sac goes to the town and becomes part of the public roadway.
Yeah.
But don't, you know, we, the two lot homeowners' associations have really not.
No. So that's part of my motion, is that the cul-de-sac becomes part of the town right-of-way roadway and waive the homeowners' association. Anything else?
No. Hang on. Is that amenable to you? Okay. All right. So with those little bits of modification, there's no further discussion? You're all clear on the motion at this point? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, having unanimously, four to all vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next thing before us is 7715, which is Machinny Lane. I probably butchered that in on capacity.
Machinny? Where'd that one come from?
Is it? Is that?
That's my guess, yeah.
Okay.
Machinny, machine.
Machine, I know exactly.
Who comes up with these things?
Trying to name the boat, then.
21. We'd like to simplify.
Thanks, Ben. Look at you. Good luck.
I think you have an extra one.
Yeah, don't be hard.
Do you need an extra one? Because I can part with this. I pretty much got it. Yeah, go ahead. Do what you need to.
Show where it is on Tacoma Way.
No, I, um.
It's right next to Secanow.
For the record, Don Brackett, Brackett Engineering. I can explain where it's located. This is a four-lot subdivision that was approved back in 2012. The current property is known as 21 Tacoma Way. If you were coming down Amelia to where you hit Tacoma Way and take a left, the property is about 100 yards down on the right. The original proposal for the four lots consisted of a 40-foot wide right-of-way and an 18-foot wide gravel road. If you look at the second sheet that I've given you, we've just sort of simplified what the original design looked like. What we're asking for is to modify the original drainage design from 2012.
It's already approved, yes?
It's already approved, correct.
I don't have any other names. You not have a name yet?
We didn't have a name.
Uh, maybe it was added later.
Mr. Chairman, it was called Oscar Squared LLC at the time.
Oh, okay. Thank you. The way it was designed, it consisted of a swale, that the road would drain into a swale. The swale was designed on the side of the road where the lots were. And if you look at the design, it consisted of open, an open trench, long open stone trenches, which would have required culverts underneath the driveways for each individual house. Looking at that design, the current owners didn't, didn't think it aesthetically was the best design for the site, and from an engineering standpoint, would be concerned about the maintenance of that type of system. So what we've done is, if you go back to that first page, our proposed design would be, instead of shedding the water from the road toward the lots and requiring that type of system, is to shed it away from the lots, put it into a long drainage swale that would act like a rain garden. And in that swale, we would, we would propose two catch basins that would go into a subsurface leaching system, which would consist of a 24-inch diameter perforated pipe with stone around it. Ran the calculations, and it meets the calculation requirements for a 25-year storm. We feel it's a much neater system. It would be an easier system to maintain, and in general, it would be, you know, better for the development as a whole. Also, if you look at the first plan, the design also required an open drainage swale between the two lots at the end, lots three and four, that went to another open drainage easement, taking up a significant area on lot four. Again, we didn't feel all that was necessary for this type of development, given the soil conditions, topography, and so forth. We think this design is more in harmony with the other designs that have been done, and would be much better for the neighborhood. We did talk with Mr. Pesci this afternoon. He had a couple of comments that we'll have to do revised plan for. One had to do with some rim grades. Another, we neglected to show the turnaround end on our plan that we submitted, so obviously we plan on putting that there. So the road itself is exactly the same way that it was approved. It's basically just a drainage system.
Okay. Board members, go ahead.
These may actually be more aesthetic than anything else. Is this an open stone drainage ditch right on Tacoma?
Not on Tacoma, along, in parallel with the proposed road.
Yeah, but five feet off of Tacoma.
Probably the beginning of it, yes. Yeah, so.
And you have a Belgian block? This is paved, right? Tacoma's paved at this point still?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
You've got a Belgian block going into this?
That's what was originally approved.
Yeah, why don't you just pave it?
That's fine. We don't, I don't think we have any issues either way.
I mean, we've got, since this was approved, we've got the little one on the right there. I forgot the right.
Tom's Way.
No, no, no. The little one.
Oh, the other catch lot?
Yes, catch lot.
Okay.
Right? It's really, I think, we, I'm just sort of.
Keep going, keep going.
Then you have Bayberry's paved now. You have Zack and Al's paved on the other side of this thing. I mean, you know, I'm not trying to be Mr. Paver, but in this particular area, we've got all of them are paved, so I don't know. What was the reasoning behind?
I, what we, again, we weren't the original engineers. It was a firm from Taunton or something. But it was approved as a gravel road, and that's what our client anticipates doing.
Was it gravel or shell?
I was thinking of noise, the abutters are going to hear all the cast.
I'd have to check. While the base of it is gravel, I'm sure, the decision may include a shell surface, which whatever that.
Well, it says crush shell base on this plan that you've got. It says see detail, which I don't have.
Six inches of gravel on compacted subbase with shell surface. So that, that would just be the dressing on top of the six inches of gravel.
I think, frankly, I think it should be paved, number one. Number two, this thing is awfully close. How deep is this?
Now, don't, are you looking at what's existing, what was proposed?
No, I'm looking at what you're.
The swale itself that we're proposing is only 12 inches deep.
I see it now. That's better than what was there before, but it's still, it doesn't have as much detail as the first plan, but it still shows, I guess, Belgian block, and I think it should be paved.
Well, we noted that any of those details to refer back to the original approval.
Paved apron. I don't know if that's someplace we can go through this process.
Well.
But I think Belgian block is completely inappropriate out there.
Go ahead. Just real quick after.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
You've got an action deadline on 1/22. You know that?
As a modification? I saw that. I wasn't sure if that was correct, but.
I'm looking at this, wondering what that is, but at the same time, I'm also thinking about one more meeting to clean it up if you have to go back to your people.
Yeah, we have no, we have no problem coming back for another meeting. I can ask them about the paving, although I'm, I'm guessing they're.
It costs more money, but you can still do your, your rain garden thing. You can still do all that. You don't have to put in all the drainage stuff, if you do it right.
Well, we could pave and still keep this type of drainage system. We probably need some more leaching structures, but.
But if you, I'm just thinking to myself, you've got the abutters that have been out there for years, and they're going to start hearing cast driving on gravel, and the dust from the gravel, it's just, doesn't make any sense.
And you can hear a pin drop out there.
You know? It's very quiet out there, and all of a sudden, we've got this noisy road.
And that's why everybody else paved.
Yep.
Just, I'm just saying. I don't know, I don't remember the Oscar thing that closely, but I don't know if what's-his-name was done yet, the.
Avery.
The catch lot.
Catch lot was definitely done by them.
No, no, I know it's done now. I'm saying when we approved the original thing.
So I think we need to hold this, frankly.
You know? I'm just.
Plus, you said you had to make some changes for Ed Pesci, right?
Yeah, I mean, they might have changes, but I, you know.
Is this in the, is this going to be in the sewer district someday, Andrew, or is this just water district owner? Kind of, I mean, it's water, but.
Go ahead.
Well, it has to go to town meeting to be added to the sewer district.
So it's not in the agreed area, so it might get added.
It should be in the sewer district.
Should be.
That's what I'm saying. Is there any dry sewer down there, Tacoma now? Can you do that with the paving, the part of it?
There is sewer in Amelia.
I, I.
That's what I meant. Did I say, what did I say? Oh. Tacoma, okay.
The sewer at the, we designed catch lots as well, and we left a manhole at the intersection of catch lot in Tacoma so that, with a stub, so that somebody could tie into it in the future going in this direction. The clients are going to try to pursue getting it into the district.
Oh, good.
You know? But they did want to get started on the road construction this fall, so.
It, it was submitted in the past, but at the time, they were using the checklist, which was very difficult to include.
Tell me about it.
That's because we had all the water. Now we get rid of the water, so we want people to hook up.
I did want to make a point, though. I think Tom's Way is not paved.
It's not. Tom's Way is dirt.
Right.
Yep.
I, you know, I, as I remember the subdivision, there was concern about, you know, how it looked, and they were pursuing a shell driveway with the one dwelling per lot, I believe is, was the proposal. So if it's going to be changed, though, I do think that needs to be properly advertised because I think there was some interest by the abutters on the level of development and the look.
Hold on for a second. Leslie, and then I'll come to John.
Just one more thing on that, with the one-dwelling unit per lot. I recall that restriction was put on because it was in the sewer, outside of the sewer district, and the roadway width at the time was a little bit more narrow, and there's a condition, I think, in the original decision that says if, you know, it's added to the sewer district and secondary dwellings are requested, that the board has to take another look at the infrastructure.
Okay.
So might be a good time to do that if we're going to re-advertise it.
Yeah.
So obviously, that would help if they decided to pave the road, looking at that in the future, or put a dry sewer line in, those kind of things.
John, go ahead.
I have one question. What's the distance between the catch basins?
What's the distance between them?
Between? About 300.
360.
200. 300.
Yeah.
Feet.
Yeah, you're right. It's just shy of 300 between the two of them.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Not hearing anything. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this application? No. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to close the, no, we're not. Motion to continue to the next meeting.
Thank you. So, motion is made and seconded to continue to our next meeting.
What is the next meeting? September?
September 8th. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, having unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You have seven ANRs before you at this point. Is anyone on the board wishing to isolate anything out from this mix? Yeah, go ahead.
You have a recommendation on the last one, Hensdale Road, and was it withdrawn?
It's withdrawn.
After the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. So we're down to six now.
We're down to five.
We're down to five because Hayden was withdrawn.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it's up in the second one down. On your new agenda.
Oh, there we go. Yep, I see.
All right. I'll make a motion to endorse 7717 O'Donnell, 7718 Flannery, 7720 Brandon Kelly, 7721 Town of Nantucket Bartlett Road, 7722 Town of Nantucket 112 Pleasant Street.
Skip 7219.
Yes.
Oh.
It's withdrawn.
Okay, withdrawn, okay. If I'm getting the lot to have a vote, okay.
Two of them are.
Okay.
Pardon? No. No, those are correct. 7717, 1819 is withdrawn. Now, motion's made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, having unanimously. You have eight secondary dwellings before you at this point. You have eight secondary dwellings before you at this point, is there a wish to isolate anything out from this group?
I believe there's one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of really quick comments on almost all of these. There was a standard condition that was left out.
Okay.
If, maybe I could just run through that?
Let's do, let's just do it, yeah.
Okay. On the first one, ten R Skyline Drive, they are requesting an extension to October twelfth, twenty fifteen.
Okay.
Staff recommends approval of that.
Twenty fifteen?
Yet expires in twenty fourteen, and they're asking for a one-year extension.
Okay.
Levinson thirty-two Nonantum, we need to add the standard condition about an apron. Same thing with twenty Blackfish.
These are all paved, right?
Yes, same thing with three-oh-six Matticat Road, Charles and Cynthia Lenhart, that one, we need to remove the condition about the apron. And Duke's Road is public, so the first two conditions about roadwork would have to be coordinated with the DPW, it wouldn't be up to the private person to do that.
Right.
And then fifty-one Ocean Ave, add the standard condition about an apron.
Okay.
Duke's is dirt, I think, twenty-five, so...
I know Chuck wanted to talk about his Lenhart.
Although this isn't a public hearing, did you have a brief comment for us, or did Leslie just cover it?
I think she just covered the three issues.
Perfect.
So my question.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the secondary dwellings per the comments made by staff.
I have one question. Well, just 'cause, and Blackfish, are they allowed second dwellings? Diane thought you had to remember.
Some of them are restricted.
Oh, but this is one of them?
I do not believe this is one, I'm going to...
No, this is the one at the ver, at the end, and they're allowed two back there.
All right.
I just thought, I remembered some, oh, we had one dwelling.
The ones towards the front that we've seen, two, four, six, those guys, these are the two that are the big lots at the back, that back up to the conservation, they're allowed two, and we've already approved a couple of them at the HCC.
Okay. Want to make your motion again?
I'll make a motion to approve per staff alterations of the conditions.
And the extension request.
And the extension request.
Second. Now, motion's made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, having unanimously. Under previous plans, seven-zero-eight-four Arrowhead Drive subdivision, this is a Form J for lot releases at this point, Leslie or Andrew?
Mr. Chairman, these are interior lots, most of the infrastructure is completed, we recommend endorsement.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the Form J lot releases?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I see voting.
Ayes, having unanimously. Next is fourteen-fourteen Nantucket Golf Club modification.
Mr. Chairman, this is just FYI only, at the last meeting, the board voted to approve subject to the engineering work being finalized.
Yeah.
There's stuff in your packet from Ed Pesci and from Blackwell.
Okay, thanks.
So I can go ahead and approve this?
No, that's okay, we've already approved it, this was just...
Oh, just FYI.
Yep, all right. Next thing before is the seven-six-six-seven, which is the Woodland Hills subdivision. This item was not anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours in advance, so we'll need to ratify this at the next meeting, but after having talked to Andrew and Leslie, the subject matter was noteworthy to try to get this onto our agenda tonight, so, Leslie, I'm gonna go to you, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, the request from the applicant is to endorse the final plans and legal documents. Staff has reviewed the legal documents, and we recommend endorsement. We are requesting that you endorse the lotting plan, so that they can get that up to the land court, and the other sheets will be pending the final okay from Pesci Engineering.
Okay. Go ahead.
So what exactly am I making a motion to do?
To...
Since we've got so much hanging out there still?
To endorse the legal documents and the lotting plan, and to endorse the rest of the plans pending the final sign-off from Ed Pesci.
So moved.
And do I hear a second? Chair'll second it for discussion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
That's okay, there you go. Motion's not made and seconded, is there a discussion on this issue? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes, having unanimously, it's a four over vote by the board. Okay, preliminary plans, seven-seven-two-four SP Norwell LLC, Union Street. This is five lots and five buildings. Good evening, Mr. Bodat, how are you?
Good, thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Where are these lots, Rick?
This is on Union Street.
Number?
Seventy-eight, all right.
Oh, um...
Didn't we...
Yeah, yeah.
Been there already.
Okay. Rick Bodat for the applicant, Jamie Anderson, RJ O'Connell is here with me tonight, he's the engineer, will describe the plan for you, but this is a, just a preliminary plan at this stage, a five-lot subdivision on Union Street.
It's Mellow's, right?
Yep, yeah, yes.
There's a road to go through there.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one confirmation on this, you've checked off residential subdivision, is that the intent here?
That, that is the intent, yep.
So even though it's in the commercial district, you are pursuing residential development on all the lots?
That, that's the intent at this time, yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that first.
Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, Jamie Anderson, site civil engineer with RJ O'Connell Associates, here to represent my client, SP Norwell LLC.
This one, yeah.
Here to present a preliminary subdivision plan for the parcel located at seventy-eight Union Street, as mentioned. The land is zoned residential, commercial at this time, and so the nearly one-acre lot, as you can see here on the plan, just under one acre, it's located between Union Street here, sort of right at the bend in the road, all the way back through here to Washington Street Extension, there's this heavy, heavy dark line here. Uh, let's see, there currently exists three structures on the site, there's a two-story dwelling located on the frontage here, and two one-story garages, one of which currently sells antiques and weather veins.
Mm-hmm.
We all know that, okay. An isolated wetland area in the back here, mainly located on the, the town land, there is a small sliver of it located on the site.
Yeah, I remember that, yes.
Just flipping over for the subdivision, where I'll know.
Union Way.
So the current proposal is to subdivide the parcel into five buildable lots, that would include a forty-foot wide dead-end street, currently temporarily called Union Way, with a T-style hammerhead turning layout. Each of the five lots are at least five thousand square feet, some of them all the way up to about ten thousand square feet, this long one here. The five lots will be served by utility infrastructures, infrastructure that will be constructed in the cul-de-sac itself, water and sewer will be brought off of Union Street, there is a water main coming up the center, and a sewer main located here, both, like I said, off of Union Street. You can see on the, on the plan, there's some schematic grading that we've shown, grades will continue to gradually slope from west to east, towards the wetland area in the back. All drainage in the proposed driveway will be collected by catch basins, as shown on the plan. It is the owner's desire at this time to utilize like a shell surface, in lieu of the two minutes pavement. That's pretty much it that I have on the subdivision itself, obviously, we'll be seeking all permits necessary for the site, now with the Concom. But any, any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Go ahead.
I know this property pretty well, both buildings pretty well, and you're showing both, pretty much the house going away, because the road is running through the middle of the house?
That's correct.
Sort of where the driveway is now?
Correct.
Be forewarned that the HCC's gonna have to allow it to move out of there.
Okay.
And it's one of the oldest houses in that strip.
No, we understand that, and obviously anticipate filing with the HCC, so it would either, the, the plan would be to really do whatever the HCC thinks is necessary, we would certainly like to remove it, if that's not possible, I think it would have to be utilized on one of these lots.
And the, we've already given permission for the shop to move out to his place in my comment.
Right.
Um, there's a, a lot of this was filled tidal land behind it when they dug the basement for the hospital in the late fifties, and they dumped it all down there. There wasn't a whole lot down there, except for the Aguare cottages at one point. There's a lot of wetlands back in there, a lot of cat and nine tails, a lot of stuff back there. How are you getting five buildable lots with enough upland to build on all five lots? And the road.
Well, I mean, I think you have the, the plan with the, the wetland on it, I mean, most of the wetland is, is off the property, I mean, we, we only need a certain amount of upland area, ninety percent, and most of the wetland, most of it is upland, most of the wetland, the actual wetland is off the site.
Except for the back three lots.
They certainly have buffer zones on them, but they don't have a lot of actual wetland resource areas on them.
Well, the hundred cuts right on through both, all three of those lots, in fact, it encompasses one of them, so you're got, you're down to fifty, which gives you very little on that middle lot at all. So I'm just, you know, I hesitate to say, yeah, this is cool, with a bunch of trapezoids and a bunch of other stuff that's weird, when you can't build, you may have some issues over at the other commission.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, it all starts with you guys, if we, those lots have the requisite amount of upland, obviously, the, the three back lots are gonna be a little, are gonna be slightly constrained, and we'll have to deal with that any way we can, I mean...
And they're all exiting right onto Union Street at a really bad spot. I'm just wondering if, trying to cram five lots in here, I appreciate the size of some of them, trying to cram five lots in here with a forty-foot wide way, it looks like a nightmare, frankly, in that particular location.
Excuse me.
Bless you. Because I'm looking at something that I don't see very often, and I certainly don't see in the old historic district, and I certainly don't see in town, because you just don't have a piece like that. And I'm looking at very oddly shaped lots, and I think it might be a little, one lot too many, I think it might be over congested, but that's, that's...
Mm-hmm.
I'm just looking at this as preliminary, and that's just my initial take on this.
Right.
I think it's odd.
Yeah.
It's gonna force certain development that is atypical to the old historic district on Union Street. That's a big concern for me, plus traffic, that much traffic coming onto Union right after Conso Springs, and they're coming around that corner, and they're gonna clip anybody coming out of there. I've gone into Mellow's shop and tried to get out, it is, I go out the, I go all the way through and come out Washington Street Extension, I don't even bother to try to come back out there, let alone turn around and come back out there, or back out. So I'm just, I'm just a little freaked out by the whole thing at the moment.
Well, a reduction in the number of lots is certainly something that we're gonna look at, you know, from, for, for a lot of reasons, obviously, development, the sale potential, et cetera, so...
And you're gonna max out your initial salvo across the bow, but I think this is a little overwrought, shall we say?
We're not Concom.
He knows he's gotta go there.
Ty, go ahead.
I agree with a lot of what Linda says, I think a forty-foot wide road going in Union Street, just before Grand Street Turn is totally inappropriate, because now we have the bike path coming out on Orange Street, just ways up, to stop the traffic, you've got a stop sign on Orange, you've got a stop sign on Union, then you've got the Conso curve, and this is a forty-foot wide road going in on Union Street, which is in the old historic district. I don't know what the new line is, whether it's including Tony's House or not, but I think that it isn't appropriate, and your hundred-foot, fifty-foot, twenty-five-foot lines from the, from the wetland wipes out that lot number three, which certainly can't be ninety percent building there. I think you have to think what Union Street is, and is that not an old thing, that there was a road that was under question, whether it belonged, was open, belonged to the town, or it belonged to Charlie Sale on the far end?
Oh, yeah, it's been a big argument, for years.
Tony Mellow on the Union Street end, I think that needs to be tracked down a bit. Because I know, I don't know how many years ago, but it was, it was an argument that I don't ever think got settled, and Charlie's is now deceased, so it leads it to young Charles, but it comes out right beside his, his place on Washington Street Extension. And if you were to put something in there, and that road was available to you, I certainly would think about having the driveways go that way, and not out on Union Streets.
All set? Are you all set? Excuse me. Go ahead.
I noticed on the plans, you say that the flags haven't been reviewed by conservation yet.
That's right.
So I mean...
That's right.
So the line, these offset lines...
Would need to be confirmed.
Are, well, they may not be the offset lines.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, they were flagged by LEC.
I know, at least he's conservative, yeah, I understand that.
Nat, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just, first of all, the forty-foot layout, I mean, what travelway's gonna be, it's two different things, so we just be clear with that. What about access from Washington Street for the other lots?
Diane just said that.
Did you say that?
Diane said that.
Oh, Diane said that, okay, sorry. I mean, that, I mean, that's, you know...
Yeah.
The people that go out the house at, the house right after Conso, where everybody parks and kinda walks down the path to go down to Washington Street, that is probably the toughest driveway on Nantucket, other than, other than Pat's house. I don't know how Pat's always driving, hopefully, she needs to flip that car around every time, it's crazy. But this one's pretty, that's pretty bad, I mean, to create, there has to be some way to make so vehicles can drive in, but not be, be driving out. And I'm just, I know this is, this is early in the stages...
Yeah.
But these are the kind of questions that are gonna come up.
Yep.
Public hearing, people are gonna comment stuff, Andrew's gonna comment on the old historic district stuff here, this is still kind of a hanging piece of SC, this is exactly why these zoning districts need to be eliminated, right here, this is a perfect example. The title search stuff, I mean, obviously, that's some, that, I know, there was something about this value sale thing in the past, because there was talk about putting a bike down in there, or road in there, truck route, there's been some goofy ideas about this piece of property. So, I don't know if there's any issue with that, but I mean, obviously, that's gonna have to happen, just in case there's some lawsuit hanging out there down the road, you never know. So...
And you're talking about on, actually on this property, that's...
Yeah, that little thing that goes through the reeds and out towards the back, that I always go up the back instead of the front. Mellow, Andrew, you may remember this, when Mellow Anton decided that he owned both sides of it, that he owned it, that it was a road, but he owned the land, he didn't use it, and so that was overgrown, going down Washington Street Extension, but there was an argument about who's got the rights in this thing, and you have both sides of it. And Andrew, I don't know if it was ever resolved, it just sort of went quietly away, when nobody pushed it at one point, but it was a major issue for him.
And also, the building, the addition on Charlie's, this one, it had something to do with that, how close he was to that right-of-way, or whatever.
I, that came up at the zoning board hearing for Charlie's still, so...
Mr. Chairman, there's a separate right-of-way that you're talking about, that, which was Salt Marsh Way, I believe, that came down behind the sales property. I know that, and it may be in the title, that I believe the county or somebody may have given an, an access point down on Washington Street Extension, but again, we can look at that. I, I don't think there's anything through the property.
Okay.
It was discussed that that might be a good idea...
Yeah.
...to have an access through there...
He didn't want it.
...which would be something that we might wanna talk about.
Okay.
But at least along the, the path of the existing driveway, if it were for emergency access, or maybe for pedestrian access or something, but that's, that's one of the comments that I did wanna make, but I don't believe there's any, any condition of a road on there right now, so...
And just to obviously answer, just to answer Nat's question, I mean, you know, obviously, you know, it's something we can discuss, to have, you know, certain lots, whether it's five or four lots, a couple accessed off of Washington, or, you know, whatever, whatever might work, whatever might make the most sense to reduce the traffic coming right onto Union.
Ms. McGlaughlin?
I'll give yourself a little history on that area, in the forties and fifties, Joe Santos always used that back road to get to his property, both as well as the front street. And next to it in the back, there's twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet of land with the county of Nantucket assets. My grandfather had that, he was sheriff, my mother got it, and she passed it to me, and I donated it to the town, so the town has ownership down there, and parking if they want it, so that's a little history of what happened in that corner there.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
I do remember there were issues about running the road through, let alone the fact that Mr. Mellow did not want it cutting through his yard, quote unquote, because they said there was no, not a snowball's chance in hell that they were gonna get a regular road through the wetlands and all the cat and nine tails, which are all about ten feet tall back in there. So there was a question about whether it can legally even go through there, whether the Concom would let a, a road be established going through there, though it showed up going through, and on the old aerials, it shows up going right through there. So it's practical use versus legal use versus whether we're gonna get a real road through there, a driveway going back to Wash, to Washington Street Extension, but I tell ya, I'm not one of those in favor of having an access onto Union Street at that point, having been caught up there myself, coming out of Mellow's.
Right.
It's dangerous.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
There's no line of sight, well, I think Andrew might bring that up, the line of sight going towards Conso Springs and getting those people coming around, the trucks and everything coming around that corner, everybody coming out of here would be a grease spot. Shh.
Mr. Chairman?
No, you and your rotary.
Can you, can we put that into our lexicon?
They would be totaled, let's put it that way.
Yeah, Andrew, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out, I think, you know, there, there is proposed driveway shown directly onto Union Street, and that is not our practice at all, to, to allow that, I mean, with the new subdivision road, the driveway entrances should come off the interior road. I do think that what's been brought up is serving the lots from Washington Street, you should look at that, and I would hope that the planning board would allow reductions or variations in the road width, you know, to create almost like a parking quarter, if you're gonna provide something in the rear, that there would be some flexibility on part, on the part of the board. The other thing would be possible to look at... The other thing would be possible to look at, again, a substantially reduced right-of-way, and maybe there could be a one-way in one direction that would provide the furniture that you would need, you know, maybe at the far end of one part of the site. So, again, something to think about here. If, I do think that Washington Street, you know, coming to a dead end has no outlet at all. And your job is to coordination of roads as opposed to a lot of the aesthetic things. You're supposed to be looking at the coordination of roads. The coordination of utilities, there also should be a way to connect the water and sewer so there's loops instead of the dead ends. Wherever possible. I think the zoning issue, this is an area that we are trying to rezone. So I think there should be some level of commitment to one of the residential zones, which would either be, you know, either a combination of R O H and R five, or one or the other.
You mean, in terms of setbacks, ground cover, is that what you're talking about?
And, and an article which would put this and other properties into that zone at the upcoming town meetings.
Yep.
So I think that certainly should be considered in advance. The R C District, as you know, is a zone that we are phasing out for exactly this type of reason. So I think those are my comments so far. But I think, you know, there could be, there could be some, I think, some more creative applications here you might want to think about.
Okay, absolutely. And I, you know, and I just ask the board to keep in mind that, you know, on the Washington Street access, we are going to have to deal with the wetland issue there as well. I think, you know, when we would come back to you, obviously, we'd probably have the wetland confirmed by the Conservation Commission by that time. But, but we're still, we're all on the fifty-foot buffer there as well.
So, Ms. Bodett, just a few things. I have to concur with Mr. Bors. I trust you're going to be looking at waivers for the subdivision, correct?
You know, probably by the time, yeah, by the time we get into it, I imagine we'd want to, I'm going to guess we'd want to reduce the size of the road in some places as well. And other waivers.
I, so, I think he's brought up some very good points that as a board, we're going to have to really consider. You know, there's no unearthly reason why that road can't be pushed all the way to the lot line that takes it as far away as possible from the, you know, from the wetlands, okay? This is, this is, you're recreating this whole area from scratch at this point. So I can hear barriers brought up very quickly, but I think there's also some solutions that you need to bring as well, too. Not only in terms of a roadway that's going to interface between the two, but maybe even a pedestrian easement as well. As a planning board and as the planning commission, we've cited certain things in this area that are kind of critical toward dealing both with traffic and bike traffic as well, too. The Union Street traffic, just, just, I mean, I think you've heard the entire board say it. I'm going to reiterate it again. Dumping five lots worth of material, of cars onto Union Street, given the location and the way Union Street flows? I think that's a tough sell. I really do. Any consideration about restrictions on second dwellings on the lots?
You know, it's not something that we've really touched on yet, but I think you can tell, you know, sort of by the width of these lots, that it, you know, might not, might not be the best idea for the applicant to have second dwellings anyway.
Yep.
So it's certainly something that'll be on the table, I'm sure.
Because I think, I think that's something we'll be looking at as well, too. I think Andrew's right in terms of making sure that with the water and sewer connections, that again, that they're not just running internally, that there's a, there's a potential, even if you just stop it off at the end, to start making some loops in that area if one hurt. And I think, as he said as well, too, and I have to concur with him, if there is a thought to start moving this preliminary plan forward and you are willing to just make this all residential, that there should be an article crafted probably by late October, November, to start looking at bringing this thing into the R O H or R five district. So I think those, those are all some points. And the shell surface, I don't think that's, we're going to have to see what, what you'd be willing to start removing from, from this five-lot subdivision before we get to that level. That's, that's a far stretch right now in my mind's eye. So, go ahead.
Out of my jurisdiction somewhat, but that cross-through to Washington Street Extension's been going on for fifty years plus.
I'm sorry, I'm.
That cross-piece coming off of, through Melrose, out the other side, has been going on for probably fifty, sixty years. And when I look at the aerials, you can see it. That may be a way to get the Concom to agree to allow you to run, to continue to use it. As long as it's not paved, but it's stabilized, you know, because it does this a lot because nobody touches it right now. But it may be the way to get it so it becomes usable to you guys as a access out the back.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think we could do something there, I mean, that the Conservation Commission would allow.
But I am going to encourage you as well to work very strongly with staff because this, to me, doesn't belong as a cul-de-sac. And if you, if you keep looking at it that way, you've got one board member who's, who's going to be really questioning what just happened. So I'm going to, I hear what the, here we go. I hear what the barriers are again, but I haven't heard what the potentials are. And I think both Andrew and Leslie can maybe give you some thoughts because I know we've cited that area for quite some period of time. Board members, is there anything else?
Reiterate what you just said. Work with staff, come up with some. Something, you know, that makes, I don't want to say makes more sense, but this is a sensitive area. This is like that Brock's Court thing, stuff that, it's this oddball. It's going to raise a lot of questions, especially with the move-in houses thing. Turning to what you see in the papers the last few weeks with North Liberty Street. We just want it to work. Andrew's talking about, you know, build it like it's R five, is what he's basically saying. I mean, plant it that way, fifty-foot fringes instead of forty, et cetera. So that way, it gives you a little time to come back with realistic plan.
You know, and please understand, too, I mean, we've, we've kept our eyes on this area for quite some period of time.
We knew this was coming, though.
Right. These opportunities arise once. They don't come back real often. So you can hear where we're going to want to try to put our best foot forward with this one because I'm not sure this opportunity will arise for the town again. And we need to be looking twenty, thirty, forty years down the road about how it all works together. So I think, you know, I'm glad to see this before us. But I, I want to make sure that we're going to try to do all this the right way.
I understand, and it's something that I've, you know, I've already talked to the clients about expecting some attention to this property, for sure.
Anything else? So, do you have, go ahead, Andrew, I'm so sorry.
Before we close, just again, the other thing that we should think about is some sort of easement running along Union Street that would allow sidewalks to be pushed back or reconstructed. So I don't, you know, it'd be good to know where the poles are all along there, if there are, if they're in the front. And I would assume in the new subdivision, that would be all underground. But if there's any opportunity to move things underground, it would be a time to look at it. And also the name, generally, we need to come up with a name that's not too close. It just causes a lot of confusion. We have My Comet, add My Comet Road, so I would look at another name for that.
Mr. Chairman, just to add, we do have an approved street list of suggested names that you could get from our office.
Something that would start with a pine.
It's getting towards the bottom of the barrel.
Michelli?
And it doesn't start with a pine either.
Okay, right, yeah. We've got plenty of those out there.
Do you, yeah, Mr. Bodett, do you feel like you've got a clear sense of kind of where we're trying to head to at this point?
Absolutely, and obviously, I'll be talking to staff as well.
All right. Do we need to send him a letter or anything to that effect? So I appreciate the board.
They want to continue it.
I'm sorry?
I mean, the other option is to continue and come back, or do you want us to sort of write it up?
I, I.
Yeah, you can, we have.
I mean, it's kind of.
The reason is, the point, I think, that we would be, is that we would not approve it this way and ask for a whole series of changes.
Okay.
So it's up to you to, if you want that, to bring to your client, or if you would rather come back with maybe a different idea.
You know, I think it probably makes sense to push a month and come back with something that, you know, maybe not exactly what the board is looking for, but maybe a better sense of, you know, another idea that the board might like a little better. Either way, we're going to turn this around, I think, pretty quickly and file the full plan, so.
And do I hear, and second, and that'll be to our nine-eight meeting. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes, happy ayes. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming before us, we'll see you in a while. There were four Z B A cases that were brought for us. Leslie, did you have anything for us?
I don't have any, but Andrew may want to speak on the Nantucket Island Resorts.
Yeah.
Twenty Cherry Street.
Yes.
Yep, the, this is a case, and I believe it's in some transition. This property is owned by Nantucket Island Resorts. It has a tent business that's operating. There is a zoning action on the property. I've had a discussion with the representative. It's my opinion that this needs what's called a powers test review where one non-conforming use changes to another. I don't know if we're in agreement on that, but that's, that's my opinion of where this goes based on the review of the prior Z B A action, which talked about building a greenhouse and some related storage to the greenhouse operation. So it's a pre-existing non-conforming commercial use in this R one district. And in order to change a non-conforming use to another, again, there's this powers test which looks at the intensity, the similarity of uses. It allows the setting of conditions, I think, that would be appropriate, again, you know, for a commercial use in a residential neighborhood, so.
No, go ahead.
A couple of things. I did have a conversation with the attorney for this in what, when I was, the twenty-five years I was at the Z B A, we always added in the alternative a special permit under one thirty-nine thirty-three A to change the use, so it would give the Z B A somewhere to go. Is this going to be continued, or do we, good idea, re-noticed, good idea. I do remember the original permit, because I think my name is on it when I was on the Z B A. And I'm curious as to how this all of a sudden came up since the tent has been in there for at least six or seven, maybe eight years, since Sherburne stopped really actively using it. They had all kinds of trucks over there for a long time, and they were, you know, running some of their contracting out of there to fix their places from. But I'm curious as to how this finally, all of a sudden, hit the radar after all these years of operating? Or are we dealing with selective enforcement, which is a whole nother issue? But just mystified as to how this finally hit the radar this year. Any idea, was there a formal complaint made by somebody?
There was a complaint made by the residential abutter.
Which happens to be my ex-in-law, right?
It was Mr. Allen, I believe.
No, not married to that one.
The file is, there are emails from Mr. Allen about it, who has questioned it, so.
Okay. But is, the notice is going to be rectified, so there's the proper, okay. I don't know if we should comment, Andrew? What, how do we comment on an appeal?
Well, it's, it's my position and my recommendation to you that this needs to be reviewed under the powers test.
Right, absolutely.
That is when you change one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, that you look at, and there's three prongs to this, which talk about the, you know, impact on the neighborhood, the intensity of the use, and I can't remember the other one offhand. But again, I think that's fairly well-established law for this type of a use. I think that the, my review of the original permit is quite clear that it talks about a greenhouse for supplying plants to the N I R or the Sherburne Associates at that time, to their properties. And I think that the current use, whether it's been going on or not, is quite different. And I think it deserves, it deserved a review when it was changed, and it certainly deserves a review, so.
I know that it called up to it, it does. So it just mystified me how it went so many years with nothing.
This place isn't pre-seventy-two, though, is it?
It's, it's.
It's pretty old. It's pre-seventy-two?
The special permit, the May.
Go ahead.
I think the special permit was seventy-nine. I mean, the, you know, the, I think the commercial use is long before, but the actual special permit that zoning board granted was seventy-nine.
Because if this was Sherburne Associates, when did it switch from, what was it before that? What was the name? Sherburne Associates, it's a long time. Oh, it was after that.
Yeah.
The property, I think at the time, in nineteen seventy-nine, was owned by the Trips. And they received, they may either made the application, and perhaps it was a sale at that time?
I think, I think, my guess, I don't know, but my guess was that it was only because the permit was then immediately pulled by Sherburne.
Because that building.
They had their trucks down there.
Just, just want to just clarify one thing. That building that they use in for the tents, that is an old building. And that's commercial type of place with a lot of, you know, concrete ramps, heavy wood, sort of like, you know, before you would have built steel, I guess I would say. Like Young's Bike Shop, kind of trusses and things like, so it could carry weight and without having any, any, any posts. So whatever was there, that building was built before seventy-two. Those commercial activities there before. And it was a lot busier and more heavy than it is right now with the tent, because they have just vans and small pickups. It's not like that big of a deal. But those greenhouses down there, they're like those glass kind or something. They're not like a greenhouse like we see with the, with the plastic.
No, they're structures.
They're like built, you know what I mean? So.
I think you've got a good handle on it.
I think Andrew's right. It's just that I bet you that building was before seventy-two, though.
Well, maybe you'd like to come to the zoning board with me.
Well, I, or the, the other alternative, go ahead, Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, I think this, this is right on the edge of the Mid-Island overlay district. So normally, we would review this. It is just outside of it. So I think it's worthy of planning board commentary.
Thank you.
I think that the zoning board decision from nineteen eighty recognizes that there has been some non-conforming and various business activities conducted for many years. They determined at that time that the greenhouse use would not be more detrimental. But the current use is not the greenhouse use. It's different. And I believe at least that there should be an, an open process which allows any problems, if there are any, to be addressed. And that might include hours of operation. You know, where the trucks are located or whatever. And, you know, there were conditions of no retail or public sales. And, you know, whether or not that's happening or not, I guess, you know, that could be at least put on the record. But my recommendation to you again is that the powers test be applied and the applicant files for a special permit. Beyond that, I'm not saying that you take sides one way or the other, but I do believe that that is the correct process.
I'll make a motion that we make a recommendation that the powers test should be applied and that special permit relief under one thirty-nine thirty-three A should be.
And this is to the zoning board?
Should be, yes, should be sought.
Second that.
Right, and mind you, with whatever appropriate language Andrew feels needs to be inserted in there as well, too, with a little bit of historical background. Is there further discussion on that, then? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed, let's have unanimously, there was nothing else on the ZBA cases, correct? Paul Blakama?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, Nancy Wheatley, Six Rights Landing, which happens to have a trust association. And the two lot subdivisions are not the only ones with problems. So, I am here not seeking any particular response from you, but raising what is a significant issue for myself and my fellow owners on Rights Landing, with respect to the operation of the trust. The developer was Jeff Kusulik. He remains the only trustee. This June, shortly into June, I received a, essentially, a memo from someone I'd never heard of, which had 11 years of association dues totaling $5,500, because he has not, Mr. Kusulik has not sent bills to me for 11 years. In the first couple of years of the association, there was, there were one or two meetings. There was, the last meeting was getting close to 10 years ago now, which only occurred because the homeowners, the other members asked to have a meeting. And at that point, I had received, I don't know, maybe two or three bills from, from Mr. Kusulik by then. And at that meeting, Mr. Kusulik came in with, with his handful of bills that he wanted to give to us. And we said, well, first of all, he didn't really want to be a trustee anymore, so we said to him, well, we, you know, we're not paying anything until we see what you're actually spending on the homeowners' association. And we, we voted on, on two trustees who would take over, and Mr. Kusulik promised he would provide the checkbook, because that's where all the records were, it was in the checkbook. And he went off, and that's the last I've ever heard from him personally, and the last that many of the other homeowners have heard from him, unless they needed something from him. So, for example, if you want to refinance your home, then Mr. Kusulik will say, well, gee, you haven't paid me anything for a while. So, if you want to refinance your home, you need a paper from me. So, according, this is, this is the, this is the declaration of trust. And there's obviously a lot in here that's relevant. One thing is the requirement to have annual meetings. As I said, the last one was some number of years ago. The other one is that the trustee is required to annually, or more, or more frequently, if he so desires, to provide us with an annual accounting of the, of the costs and the profits for the association. We have never, and I've owned my property since January of 199, January of 2001, excuse me, the trust was created in 1995, as part of the planning department's condition for the cluster development. So, I'm sorry, I lost my, lost my train of thought there with the details. We have never, I have never received any financial information from him at all. I do know what the taxes are over the term of the agreement. I sent Mr. Kusulik a letter following his, the note from his assistant, saying that I was perfectly happy to pay the cost, but I need to know what the costs are. And I would pay him the, the taxes, but there's some, because I know what the real estate taxes are, but there's some questions there, because there, there's a couple of years where they're a little odd, because they're higher than the other years. So, we, we members, I'm speaking only for myself, but I do obviously talk with my neighbors on a regular basis, we're concerned because we're stuck. And I guess the other thing that I should say is that Mr. Kusulik has, in fact, we, at the last meeting we had, we said we wanted to take over the landscaping, you know, the maintenance of the common area. As with everything else, that's, that's never happened. Mr. Kusulik has maintained the common area consistent with his needs as the owner of some of the properties. However, I learned, I used to be here, as you know, fairly full-time in the winter. Now, I'm here, you know, once a month, or, you know, twice a month. And he, and the roads out there used to be plowed, the road out there used to be plowed. I learned from one of my neighbors that it was not plowed at all this year, and of course, there was a reasonable amount of snow. So, he's no longer fulfilling those responsibilities. So, we don't, we don't really know what to do. I think because it's a requirement of the town, that the town has some responsibility to us, because the developer who signed this, who initialed every page of this, has not followed through on these requirements. So, as I say, I'm not seeking immediate help, but I am, I'm providing this to you as a problem, which we need some help with.
I'm confused. I remember when Rights Landing came in on the old air, you know, the airfield out there, and they parceled it all up.
Yes.
What is it, I wasn't here when this happened. Was, what did the planning board require? Did we require a homeowners' association, but it's called the trust?
Yeah, let me, let me, yeah, let's, let's not spend too much time on it. There's, as we were discussing earlier tonight, there was a, Andrew mentioned, and I don't know if it's because I had been talking with him recently about the issue with Rights Landing, there is, when there's, when there is common property owned by the owners of that, of that subdivision, you have to manage that somehow, so you have a trust. So, there are many of these trusts, I don't know how many, but there are many of these trusts on the island. There are some fairly standard conditions. I don't know how Mr. Kusulik manages his other, his other trusts. I don't know how other developers do. But I do not think that this is a shining light of Nantucket management. I would be willing to bet that, that like Mr. Kusulik, they are, that the owners don't get records as they're supposed to. I would be willing to guess that Mr. Kusulik doesn't have any records. And unfortunately, what happens is the people that own the property, their only choice is to go to a lawyer, or to pay, or to pay the developer who's demanding some money.
Yeah, but what, homeowner, what's homeowners' association, let's put it that way.
But the homeowners' association is the Rights Landing homeowners' association.
Right.
And there is a trust associated with it to maintain the common property.
Common property. But what, what are you asking the planning board at some point to do? Eliminate the requirement?
No, I am asking...
Enforce it?
Well, now, let me, let me, Andrew, let me let Andrew jump in.
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, what we would do is if you find relevance to this, which, you know, I think you should, we would schedule a public hearing and call Mr. Kusulik before you to explain, you know, why this is in disarray, and basically to set some parameters about getting it fixed.
But what does the planning board have the right to do in that case?
To rescind the subdivision, couldn't they?
That's correct.
Absolutely.
And then we, you know, we approve it with new conditions.
Because I've never been through anything like this, so I didn't know what the process was here.
Linda, I don't think anybody's been much through anything like this. They live through it because they pay the developers. I'm not aware of anybody who's ever, who's ever jumped up and complained.
Yeah. The homeowners, you know, the homeowners' associations has been a standard feature of all planning board approvals, basically since 1991.
Right.
So, and in larger subdivisions, it makes sense, especially where you have dead-end roads, and you're, you're asking, because we're not making them public roads, but you're asking the private residents to take collective actions, to see that the infrastructure and all the hard work that went into the subdivision is maintained on an annual basis. You, you set up a homeowners' association, you require the developer to fund it initially, before any of the lots are released.
Correct.
Usually, before we release the last lot, we make sure that that has been all done. I don't know if that is the case here, we're going to research that. But ultimately, we would let the owners, all of them, know that their subdivision is in non-compliance, it's an ongoing requirement, and ask that corrective action be taken.
Because I have seen some homeowners' association documents where the right of enforcement was not given back to the planning board. In this case, was the right of enforcement given to the planning board on this one?
The homeowners' association is a basic requirement of the subdivision.
It is, but do we have the right to enforce the, the parts of the homeowners' association?
I don't think that's relevant, Linda, to tell you the truth. I think there are, if there were certain things not being done, you're right, it's divided, like there, there might be no clotheslines and some of the other stuff that we traditionally did not take on as enforcement.
Right.
But the basic premises that there is one and it's functioning is key to all the subdivisions.
Okay.
And I, unfortunately, I think we will see some more of this. We've heard some other complaints in other neighborhoods of them not functioning. Where there's two and three lots, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And we have, we have removed those, you know, where, again, it's such a small task to be handled by individual homeowners. But I think Rights Landing, the way it lays out, there's an access road, there's chip-seal road, that really requires some ongoing maintenance. So, the way to handle it, now that it's been, that's been brought to your attention, would be to schedule a public hearing and invite the parties in for further testimony.
And if I could add, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please.
Andrew mentioned the access road and the, and, there's a, there's 11 properties, so it's not, it's more than just a couple. But it is important to maintain the road, and it's particularly important to maintain the property during the, during the off-season, because there are houses out there, and if, if something happens, there, the, the road out there needs to be maintained, it needs to be plowed, so that, so that safety vehicles can get out there. And ironically, one of the things that a lot of people don't know is that we have a, we have a cistern for firefighting purposes, because there's no town water out there. And when the house burned on Tom Nevers Road, the fire department apparently didn't know that. And they had a source of water for that fire, which was relatively close, and they, they didn't know it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Andrew?
Yes.
Run me through, run me through the formalized process of how do we get there. Does there have to be either, something as a verbal testimony from one person in the homeowners' association just to trigger this event, or does it need some more formalization beyond that?
No, you're, you're at any, you can reopen any subdivision on your own initiative at any time.
I'm just checking in to see if there's anything that's out there. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing. Does this, can we do it in September, or what do we, because we, bad weather's going to be coming after that. Is that something we can do? I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing and notify all the parties involved for the September 8th meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for opening that door, too. As Andrew said, it sounds like there might be a few more, so I guess we...
You know, I owned a condominium in, in Boston for a number of years, and I was the first president after the developer turned the condominium over to the, to the condominium association owners. So, I'm familiar with all of the trials and tribulations of having joint ownership of property. And it is, and it's important. It does, and it doesn't work unless people pay attention.
Right. Thank you. Anything else before us at this point, ladies and gentlemen? Andrew, is there anything else on the, I know, everything else, no action needed, none of the business?
No, Mr. Chairman, I did, and we apologize for the zoning law update. Now, all the pages are there, so, anyway, that's all set. And the article from the New York Times, I think, is just interesting, related to the formula businesses.
What is that about?
There was, just so you know, a formula business case decided from Somerville in 2013 that upheld it as well. So, again, we're, is a land court decision, not a higher court, but still. So. And then, any of the ENFs, if, any of the notice of intents or ENFs are available in the office, if you want to review them.
Thank you. Andy, thank you. Do I hear a second? All those in favor, thank you very much. Have a nice night, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being here.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]